Okay, moving on, we will go to number three. Uh municipal code amendments concerning management of shopping carts. Present presented by Arnold Rodriguez Development Services Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Arnold Rodriguez Development Services Director. The item before you this evening is a change to the city's municipal code regarding abandoned shopping carts throughout our city. Simply to provide a little bit of context for for both the council and community members that are here this evening. Historically, the city is largely taking a laissez faire approach regarding adopting a formal policy for the retrieval of shopping carts. Rather, the city for the most part has solely relied on 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 stores to retrieve their shopping carts. Until a couple of years ago, where the city really started to experience a plethora of shopping carts peppered throughout the community. So one of the things that the city did is that it formally contracted with a shopping cart retrieval company. Um and we directly paid that retrieval company for the collection of those shopping carts. Roughly since I've been here for about two and a half years, roughly twelve stores have been under contract with the same shopping cart retrieval company that the cities had. Uh approximately eleven months ago, our our contract, the city's contract directly with the shopping cart retrieval company. Um terminated and we did not renew it. Um since um since March of twenty sixteen. The city, we've received over eleven hundred notices via the city's Y C three eleven system for abandoned shopping carts in our community. So um so I I haven't done the math, that's eighteen months, I'm not. Um i- it's so we do receive a lot of um and notices for abandoned shopping carts in the community and again. These are shopping carts we've received public notices from the community via the Y C three eleven system. This is not how many shopping carts we've either picked up, w- we've seen on our own, either city staff collects them. Um planning staff, public work staff, our building inspectors, or the retrieval company itself. And in terms of why this has become an issue, well, quite frankly, I think it's been an issue, it's been an ongoing issue now for quite some time. Um the overhead above you uh goes back for twenty years in in terms of new code enforcement cases. You can definitely tell that in twenty sixteen, the city experienced an enormous increase in the number. Of new cases and quite frankly, that's largely due to the Y C three eleven system, which is our application and our tool. Um in terms of how we receive and how we communicate with a lot of community members. The the brown there um identifies a number of shopping cart cases. So obviously, from the overhead, it's pretty evident that shopping carts um are an issue in our community. So in terms of how we notify stores, um I know I I've personally gone out to probably over a dozen stores and I've um. Spoken with the uh with the store managers, I've 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 sent them letters, I've called them, our staff has done the same. S- sometimes it's been a bag of mixed results, sometimes some of the stores are extremely receptive, they go out, they collect their shopping carts. In other times, um we haven't seen changes. Currently in the city, roughly thirty eight stores provide shopping carts. And throughout this process, we notified uh those stores via letter or uh phone calls about the item this evening. So this is a photo that was taken a couple of months ago. And it shows you the number of shopping carts that we have at any given time at the city's wastewater treatment plant. I was out there a couple of hours ago, and there's probably half that number right now. However, at any given time, we will easily have between two hundred to five hundred shopping carts at the city's wastewater treatment plant. And that's where they're stored and then that's when we notify stores to please come up and pick up your shopping carts. So in terms of this process, um this process started well before I arrived at the city a number of years ago. However, in order to 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 make sure that we're transparent and and quite frankly, in the spirit of cooperation, we had a community meeting on October the twelfth. Um we've also contacted the California Grocers Association for best practices here in the state, roughly a hundred and twenty communities. In the state of California have comparable ordinances, not identical, but very similar in terms of language approaches. We published it in the newspaper and then we also mailed uh and notices of 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 the of of that community meeting and then also tonight's meeting. Both to local stores and their corporate headquarters if we could identify their corporate headquarters. So in so in terms of the draft ordinance itself, um I'm gonna go into a couple of the details here. This largely applies to stores that have ten or more carts, which is a vast majority in in our community. Um the stores themselves would have to submit an abandoned shopping cart uh prevention program. The cost for submittal is um there is no cost. Um uh cart retrieval after we notify a store, we would want retrieval within twenty four hours. And quite frankly, the reason we put the twenty four hour time limit is if uh it's been our experience that if they're there need uh. If they're there for a longer period of time, they tend to disappear, um and that defeats the pro- uh the purpose of having an ordinance. A couple of other items, um in terms of the ordinance, we're proposing that stores may not place limits on the daily loads or days per week to retrieve carts. That's been one of the challenges um here, the director, in this case being me, I would approve the plan. And at the same time, if the plan for some reason was not working, or if there's a change of circumstances. Either the store or the city has the option of modifying that plan at no cost to the store owner. And and again, really, the goal is 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 not to punish stores, it's rather to simply encourage stores to pick up their shopping carts. And at the same time, quite frankly, the city's trying to get out of the shopping cart business. So our goal is not to have any shopping carts at the city's wastewater treatment plant because we don't wanna be responsible for. So um a quick summary uh in in terms of the regulations. If if a store has between ten and seventy five shopping carts, they do have to submit the plan. However, they do have the option of retrieving their own carts. This was specifically requested by by a couple of the stores in town and and again, in the spirit of cooperation, we thought that it was a fair request. However, the same rules apply in terms of the retrieval itself, so it does have to occur within twenty four hours. For stores within um that have seventy six or more carts, they also have to submit a plan, but at the same time, they would have to enter a contract with an independent. Third party shopping cart retrieval company for the retrieval of those shopping carts. If if stores fail to comply with the plan, which again, the key there is being the twenty four hour retrieval. Uh the city would have the option of requiring that wheel locking mechanisms um to be installed on the shopping carts. Obviously, that's not necessarily where we wanna go, our goal is to simply have stores retrieve their own shopping carts. Failure to comply could um um could be subject to a s- to fifty uh to dollar civil penalty per day. Um new stores, um w- we would have mandatory um measures and one of those mandatory measures for new stores within our community. Would be that they would have to have the locking mechanism from from the onset. And i- if you're a store with nine or fewer carts, you would not have to have a mandatory con- uh contract, however, we would also request that they. Pick up their own shopping carts. So with that being said, staff is um recommending that the city council concur with our determination that it is exempt from CEQA. And this evening, we're here to introduce a shopping cart ordinance, waive the first reading. And we will bring this item back to the city council for formal action on December the nineteenth of this year. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions or comments from the uh council?
Who's the mayor?
Yes.
Arnaldo, uh the fifty dollar penalty, is that per cart per day or just in general?
That would be per day, not per cart. There's another state statute that regulates how much a city can charge per cart. Um however, this would simply be um per day for noncompliance with their adopted plan.
Thank you.
So it's basically not complying with their plan, not uh the fact of a physical cart?
Correct.
Any uh questions or comments more from council for Arnoldo? Seeing none. I'll open up the uh public hearing um for the municipal code amendments concerning the management of shopping carts. I do have uh one speaker card, Kevin Carter.
Greetings, Mayor, greeting council and happy Thanksgiving. Um so where do I start? Um we got three minutes, huh? Arnold, you mentioned there were about eleven hundred phone calls for carts um that were abandoned in the community. I don't remember the timeframe, I think it was maybe this year, our carts cost about a hundred and ten dollars a pop. So that's about a hundred and twenty one thousand dollars worth of property that's been removed from various markets through our community. That's a theft issue, that's stolen property. That's people taking, it's no different than shoplifting or someone stealing from your home as far as I'm concerned. Um so that's my first point. Um but the root of this issue is really not a a market issue. Uh the way I look at this, this is a social issue, the most of the people that have these carts are taking them are homeless. This is the root of the problem, the carts being stolen is a symptom, we're a victim of the root of the problem here in this community. So I have a really hard time when council's considering an ordinance specifically on a small business like myself. Where we don't need an overreaching government to create more levels of bureaucracy for myself as an entrepreneur. I'll tell you, I police our own carts, at a hundred and ten dollars a pop, I can't afford to lose carts. We we track them all down and and seven and a half years we've been in business, I think we've had to replace twenty carts, twelve of them were damaged. That's how eight of ours have walked away. So I don't think it's a real issue for small or for for a business like ours or Mister Paul's or Sunflower or someone like that. I think this is an issue for Target and Walmart, for a publicly traded entity where they don't care or really concern, have a concern about the carts walking away. And um so I think maybe look at this through a different window. Perhaps this ordinance, if there is one, I'm not a fan of it at all, so let me put that out there, but in the spirit of. My own mantra for myself is when I propose a problem, I wanna have a solution, so here's my solution. Is maybe you limit it to a square footage of a market or business, say it's over twenty five thousand square feet, then it applies. Or that um if it's publicly traded or not. Um but to blanket this onto small businesses to have a plan and then this fifty dollar a day thing, I mean. You know, gosh, where's the line on this, especially when it's stolen property? Um. So really, I guess that's my whole my whole spiel, I appreciate your time, I appreciate your consideration and and thank you.
Anyone else please comes forward, state your name.
Elaine Miles, I'm gonna go into some history. My son, while going to high school and college, went out with the manager of Rayleigh's and looked for the shopping carts. And they collected them. To find a business for something that was stolen from them, to me, is absolutely wrong. If you wanna charge them for storing their carts someplace on your property, that's a different issue. Or collecting them, that's a different issue. But to find them fifty dollars a day, I think that's totally against the businesses. They value those carts, most of them, and I know my son worked four days a week. Going out to get those carts, but where are the police officers? When that cart is clear across town, you know it doesn't belong there, why aren't they doing the work? Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak, please go to the podium, state your name. Seeing none. Close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Councilman Buckland.
To the mayor. To make the assert- for anyone to make the assertion that these carts are being stolen. Um is to assume that every one of these carts have been taken uh to deprive a business of those permanently. Uh while some carts are used as, we term them recreational vehicles. Uh to carry goods to and from uh campsites or down into the river bottoms and things like that. Um I could not agree with you more uh that those individuals are in possession. And attempting to permanently deprive a business of something that they rightfully own. But second to that, um I uh attend a church next to a large shopping center. And we had installed gates to keep shopping carts from traversing the backside of the property and being left in the property. And when the wind would blow, those carts would end up scattered all over and damage cars. Those are being used by patrons of the uh shopping center. And they were using them to take their goods home because they live within a walkable distance. There's no intention um ever for a shopping cart to leave the property of a shopping facility. Good uh stores that watch that have a a good facing in the community, a little bit of a setback. Um probably don't have as much of a of a problem. Uh back in about two thousand and seven. I was at a large fire down in the river bottoms as it burned out. Uh we recovered a little over a hundred and ten shopping carts that were completely destroyed by the fire. Um this is a a problem that didn't start yesterday, didn't start uh you know, a year ago. This has been going on way back as far as I can remember, uh back into uh the seventies. Uh when you would start to see it. And there wasn't a tremendous number of homeless folks that were utilizing them then. They were simply being taken to transport uh things to and from homes, whether it be the Lucky Store in town. Long before Rayleigh's ever came uh to town and some of the other stores uh that have had this problem. And that problem will continue until devices are installed on carts. Or there is some type of uh measure taken by a municipality to stop this from happening. You have to stop it, you can't continue to to um let these things mound up. Of the eleven hundred, I'll bet you I've reported thirty of them on three one one, all in front of Hands of Hope. On uh Spiva because I have a business adjacent to that. The number of damaged cars as a result of those shopping carts being left out uh would astonish you. The crap that is left in those carts, you would never wanna put groceries in it uh once they get back to the store. These things need to be left well within the confines and the property of of the stores that have them. I agree with the large box stores and uh the large grocery stores. Are probably the ones that could care less uh because it's a cost of doing business. Um you know, a a good plastic cart, if I'm not mistaken. Um is about a hundred dollars, a good stainless cart that are still out there, that and some of the chromed ones. Go as high as about two hundred and eighty dollars. And um to add devices to those to to put perimeter boundaries on them. Is a small marginal uh fee to to make sure that these things don't wander off of properties. And certainly, uh some um some measure needs to be taken and and certainly, uh whether it be fines. Uh we try to get these things returned to these locations, but they need to take and have. Uh the onus put back on them, not the city crew who's going around picking up uh shopping carts every day.
Can any other council member? Well, you hit on the number one thing that I have is um our employees, our taxpayers. Money should not be utilized to be collecting these up, they belong to the store owners. And this as uh Councilman Buckland has said, is not, it has been going on for uh now decades. Um there have been attempts to uh remedy this in a less onerous ma- uh manner. And when there is failure for those kind and respectful ways to deal with matters. Um much more heavy handed, as as mentioned, uh has to be at least considered. And while I do not like it at all, um I really would like it to where our. Uh staff would not have to be spending their time on uh collecting, storing, phone calling all the time. And it's not a small amount of time and hours, that equates to dollars. Out of your tax money, they're not doing their job with the way it's supposed to be because they're doing. This the uh shopping centers or the stores' job. So um the stores need to be responsible, period, start stepping it up. Um and it it has gotten worse over the last few years. Um I actually hadn't seen that picture of our plant where they're storing them, so that one there was a. Uh I knew it was a lot, but that was alarming to me that we have that many in a short period of time relatively that we have to deal with. Um so. I think we need to do something and uh make it to where they have a program. That if they violate their own program of collection, it's on them, it's not on us, it's their their fault. Personal responsibility. Okay, with that, um looking uh for some action if there's no other discussion.
Mayor, I move to approve with uh one amendment if I may.
Uh present.
Um. I I understand and I think there's validity to a fifty dollar a day fine, and I think businesses are busy. They have a lot of things to do, they're victim of theft, this is a they're they're crime victims in this, and I think we all play a role in trying to fix this problem with our city. But I'd like to put uh just suggest that we change the penalty to uh effective, not immediately. But let's give them a three day space cushion before that kicks in, so after the third day of noncompliance is when that would begin.
Any discussion on that uh from other members of the council?
Mr. Mayor, if I could uh just ask if you could afford uh the director. Uh Arnoldo Rodriguez, just an opportunity to comment on that, not that he has anything negative to say, but just to give perspective from whatever context you could have, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, um just a point of clarification. The fifty dollar fine would typically be imposed if a business was not in compliance with the plan. Um so obviously, i- it's it's the council's prerogative uh to extend that uh to the third day. Um so just for context, there's also the California Business and Professions Codes, specifically sections two two four three five. Um that's a section that articulates how much cities can can charge if if it happens to collect the cart on its own. And so that that also discusses a fifty dollar fine and I simply wanna point that out, it's because I simply don't wanna confuse the two. So the fifty dollar fines, the civil penalty that we're proposing this evening is for noncompliance with the plan. Not if a city has to pu- uh collect the cart, which falls under a different category. So again, so that would be noncompliance with the plan. Um if they're stating that they're picking them up within twenty four hours, but they're not picking them up at all, or they're picking them up within, you know, seventy two hours or something along those lines. So just, again, just a point of clarification.
So let me make sure that I'm clear on that, it's uh if we collect a cart, we can charge them fifty dollars if we collect them.
If the city collects a shopping cart, we have to notify a business, upon notification, they have seventy two hours to pick it up at no cost to the business.
Okay, they have seventy two hours.
If they do not pick it up within seventy two hours, and that occurs three times within any six month rolling timeframe. Then a city can charge fifty dollars per incident. So an incident is not per cart, rather how many shopping carts the city collects on any given day. Uh however, if they pick it up within seventy two hours, the city cannot charge them the fifty dollars. However, if they're not picking up their carts within twenty four hours, then they're obviously out of compliance with the plan. And we would be able to charge them fifty dollars for for being out of compliance with the plan. Again, our goal is to not is to not have city staff picking up shopping carts, that's our goal at the end of the day.
Thank you. Okay, if you can back up to the, you said twenty four hours and then seventy two hours, clarify one more time on that.
So the seventy two hours is if city staff picks up the shopping cart and we're storing it at those city's wastewater treatment plant. Upon notification, the store has seventy two hours to pick up that cart and no cost to the store.
Okay.
However, our goal is to have stores pick up their own shopping carts within twenty four hours upon notification.
Okay. Then may I amend my amendment?
Yes. You're the one that can.
Wanna change the that to seventy two hours upon notification.
So, okay, so just a point of clarification, if 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 we receive a report through the city's Y C three eleven system. It's currently, we would notify the store immediately via email that they have twenty four hours to pick it up. You would like to change that to seventy two hours, so they would have three days to pick up a shopping cart at any given location in the community. Because these are not carts that city staff is picking up, hypothetically, this can be in front of City Hall, they would have seventy two hours to pick it up.
That's my suggestion, I I I think they're there anyway, if we give them a little more leeway on the front end, that's, I think that's being reasonable. I don't like them either, no one does, but I think just for the businesses' sake, yes. That's my suggestion, we can vote on it or not, but that's my.
Understand. Um and then the other question is, is have we been charging them for when they do not pick them up uh within seventy two hours? Um have we been actually following through with that penalty?
We have not um collected a single dollar since I've been here and to my knowledge, I don't believe the city's collected any money.
I think we need to start doing that, enforcing, getting that done.
Yeah, so just one point of clarification and not to counterpoint council member Harris, but one of staff's concerns and in speaking with a lot of the community members. Is if we allow an extended period of time for stores to pick up their shopping carts, so that again, they're not at the city's wastewater treatment plant, rather, they're scattered throughout the community. Is that once they go back, then those shopping carts are no longer there. And then um at that point, staff does have to go out and verify every Y C three eleven report. Um so staff does confirm that that every shopping cart is picked up. So my only concern or would be that the shopping cart would disappear within those seventy two hours. Um and then it.
The river bottoms.
It could be somewhere else, yeah, where, I'm not too sure, but it could be.
Mr. Rodriguez is being kind. Um we've developed an expectation of the public that shopping carts will be removed promptly. Uh and so if we if we're on our own worst enemy, we have been. Uh because as mentioned, every level of staff is out there hitting these carts, getting them out of the way. And if there's a concern, it's that if we provide an extended period of time, that the um uh our citizens may not be as patient. Um with a lower level of service um going beyond a twenty four hour period, so. But once again, it's at your discretion.
To the mayor.
We're trying to be nice too, and that's the thing.
Yeah.
Consider.
Does does the fine kick at the seventy two hours? The twenty four hours is just uh letting the stores know, come and pick it up, and then they have that time. To pick it up within that twenty four hours, if they don't, that's the discretion then to fine.
Exactly.
Okay, so there is a grace period, there is a warning, there is, and at the same time, we can clean up if it's not picked up.
Correct.
We would go out and pick them up.
And then city.
Then they would.
Correct, and then city staff would would pick it up, we would document the cart, we would take it to the city's wastewater treatment plant. But again, our goal at the end of the day is to no longer utilize city resources to pick up abandoned shopping carts, that's our goal.
Okay, that makes sense. That makes sense, with that being said, I'll make a motion with staff's recommendation.
Well, we had one already on the.
But he amended, he amended it again.
So I need, we'll have to have clarif- clarifications on it.
Reamend my reamended amendment.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Third time.
So what are you gonna go with?
My concern, uh the the only, my motive behind making the suggestion is I don't want to fang a business who's a victim of a crime. Within twenty four hours for a shopping cart, I don't like shopping carts laying around, um there's no excuse for it, we can put devices on there. Grocery store is a little bit different, but I've always, even though it's ugly, is all get out the shopping carts over at Ross, you'll never see one leave the building because that contraption they have set up, right? Um if we can come up with something like that, that would be great, I don't, I just don't want to hit a business who's a victim of a crime within twenty four hours. It it's true, it could disappear and uh someone else gonna inherit it and uh move into it or whatever they do with them, but um. That's my goal behind that, if it's not, if that's not um practical or feasible in the way it's been presented. Is that what you're telling me?
Um I think it would be extremely challenging, however, if I may offer some middle ground here.
Yep.
Um as an alternative, we could say that the fifty dollar fine does not kick in until, say, the third time within any six month rolling time period.
I think that's reasonable.
That would that would definitely give leniency.
Thank you for that. So I will uh I will amend my amended amendment to what uh Mr. Rodriguez just stated. Um move for approval, but the fine does not kick in until the third violation.
And I'll second that.
We're still going twenty four hours. Still twenty four hour, but then.
Twenty four hours.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Arnoldo. Okay.
Room for discussion.
Please.
Don't make him amended again.
Uh I'm gonna try not to. One of the concerns, um and and I heard it from uh Kevin, is uh smaller. Stores with fewer carts. Um and and making sure that um that some of our local mom and pop stores um aren't. That don't intentionally abandon their carts in town. Um I don't know if there's any room for movement on numbers of carts that they own. Because I know that the dollar store, no, the ninety nine cent store, I think they treat their carts um like they're ninety nine cents. Because I see those goofy things all over town and and they blowing the wind a lot. Some, I'm gonna guess just on their loss ratio, they probably have uh far more than seventy five carts. Uh because there's probably that many scattered around our streets at any given time. Um but the smaller stores, uh I'm I'm really concerned um that that. Uh these are totally unintentional acts uh by by citizens that have simply pushed groceries home that live in a neighborhood. And and I certainly would. And and I certainly wouldn't want those stores um impacted by anything that we're doing. Uh, just by the virtue of, they may not have the staff to go and retrieve it right away. So do we have an answer potentially for that?
Probably not directly, but an indirect answer was the number seventy five, so just for the benefit of the council and the community. The number seventy five originated from discussions with some of the stores that that came to our public discussion on October the twelfth. Um, i- if if it's the council's prerogative, if you wish to modify that, and the staff is obviously open to that. Um, I'm not certain exactly what that number exactly should be. Again, so that number was a was a result of discussions with with store managers.
All right, thank you very much for your answer.
Thank you. Um, the only other thing that I would have discussion, I mean, ask uh the only all store owner here, how many carts do you have? I did not expect that answer, that was too good.
You may have just lost a couple.
There, yeah, okay, seventy four, it's seventy four. Oh, my goodness, um. So with this discussion, there is a, I think there is a motion and a second, right? And um. Is there any desire to uh do an adjustment real quickly on the um item and for the uh motion in the second to uh. Accept some change on the number? Anybody wanna go there? With that seventy seven, it kinda messed it all up.
I'd I'd propose an amendment uh to to ninety, I I wanna keep it at well under a hundred, but I'd I would uh propose an amendment to ninety carts. I I can't think of another store besides Kevin's that might. That's locally owned that that would have more than or that that number would be greater than that. Uh, for for a locally owned uh store, it's again, it's the large uh retail outlets that own. Three, four, and five hundred of these things um that we're really trying to target. So I would, I would uh propose an amendment at ninety.
Now, before we move on, um I'm gonna give an opportunity for Arnaldo to make any concerned response on that, um is that a?
That seems very reasonable.
Okay, professional level, okay, from the department. Gotta get all the buy in on all this stuff. And uh now I ask the motion and the second as to whether they are both accepting of that amendment.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we're back to uh only change, but it's accepted though, is that ninety? Um, with basically uh also the amendment was the original one for the third.
Third violation.
Uh, in a six month period. Okay, we're clear on that. So I'll ask for the motion. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Unanimous. We just made a cake and baked it. Thank you very much for the uh great participation.